All right, it is seven o'clock and I see that we are on air. So I will call our regular city council meeting of June 14th, 2020 to order. It is being held in person at the Richfield Municipal Center. The first item is, if you are all able to stand, please stand and share in sharing the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and free, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is the open forum. And then just as a reminder, an open forum is an opportunity to share any types of comments that you would like with the Richfield City Council. It's not an opportunity for back and forth discussion, but an opportunity for folks to come and address the council. We do ask for folks to keep it to three minutes or less. And then on our city website, we do have additional ways to submit comments. So you can call us at 612-861-9711 to call in. You can also email Executive Assistant Kelly Nguyen at kwynn@richfieldmn.gov with questions. And then if you would like to call in to the open forum right now, you can call 1-415-655-0001. And the webinar access code is shared online and on the agenda, but the access code is 24625328263 and the password is 1234. So we do have one person here who has registered already in person for the open forum. I will invite Larry Ernst to the podium. And if you'd like to come up, share your name and your address before your comments, that'd be great. Absolutely. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Larry Ernstner. I'm a homeowner at 6727 Elliott Avenue South in Richfield. I have lived there for 27 years and my wife has lived there all her life. Tonight, I am voicing a plea from many Richfield residents. That is, please, no more apartment. I talked with Ben Whalen about no more apartments and that the Richfield homeowners don't want more apartments to be built. Mr. Whalen said he never heard that opinion and that is why I am here tonight, to make sure everyone on the city council hears me. Please, no more apartment. Yes, it's true apartments are taxed at a higher rate than single family homes. The taxes collected on apartments do not cover the increased demand apartments place on water, trash, sewer, schools, roads, additional police, and all other city services. Richfield's recent survey was ineffective in collecting your citizens' opinion. The survey asked, "Do you want more affordable housing?" Of course, everyone does. That's like asking, "Do you want more affordable gas?" Of course. The survey should have asked, "Should Richfield build more apartment?" The answer would be a resounding no. It seems nearly every vacant lot in Richfield is earmarked for apartment. This is not in Richfield's long-term best interest. While apartments are taxed at a higher rate than single-family homes, their tax rate does not support the density that comes with apartment. Richfield has entered a vicious cycle of building apartments to get more taxes. The apartments bring higher density, they require more services. To pay for the services, you authorize more apartments, which require more services and more taxes, and the cycle continues. Too many apartments are being built and Ben Whalen has never heard that that was a bad idea. So I'm here tonight to make sure Mr. Whalen and the rest of the city council hear that more apartments are not what the homeowners of Richfield want. So please, no more apartment. My name is Larry Ernstner. If you want to contact me about this, you can email me at larry.ernster@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ernstner. Are there any other folks here in person who would like to speak at the open forum? Anybody else here in person that would like to speak at the open forum? And then, I am sorry, I don't know, oh, Executive Assistant Nguyen, I'm like, I think I'm still supposed to go and ask you. So did we have any additional emails or phone calls or voice messages?
We do, Mayor. I have an emailed message. It's from Diane Hareda, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that. She's at 6701 Thomas Avenue South. "I appreciate the efforts that the city council or the council and the city are making towards equality and fairness in housing. I also am grateful for the support of the city with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency's work concerning perchloroethylene mitigation in the area of 66 and Penn. I would like to see, hear more about specific efforts to support local businesses and encourage more business expansion. Are we receiving compensatory taxes from Best Buy after the loss of car dealership at Penn and 76? Are there taxable opportunities for..."
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez, for those comments submitted by email. Are there any other calls, messages? No? Okay. I will wait a little bit longer just to see if somebody calls in and then I will move Any other folks calling in, Executive Assistant? Great, seeing as nobody else here in person is going to speak for the open forum and we also don't have additional emails, voicemails, or call-ins, I will close the open forum and move to the next item on our agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the city council work session of May 24th, 2022, and the regular city council meeting of May 24th, 2022.
I would so move.
Supple, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to move the minutes. Are there any comments or questions on the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, all opposed? Thank you, the minutes have been approved. The next item, we actually have two presentations today and it looks like they are with the same person. And I'll just go up, let's see here. I'll start with the first one and then I'll go move to the second one. The first one is the proclamation supporting LGBTQIA+ community by declaring June to be Pride Month and the month of Richfield. And I will ask Human Rights Commissioner Mara Glubka to please join me as I share the proclamation and then I can pass it on for you to receive on behalf of the Human Rights Commission. Does that work? Perfect. Thank you, Mara. All right, let's see, make sure I get the right one correct. All right, we have two proclamations. So, the first one is for Pride Month. So, "Whereas Pride Month is a positive stance against discrimination and violence towards individuals who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA, and celebrate sexual and gender identities. And whereas the Richfield City Council and staff identified celebrating diversity and being equitable as core values, recognizes that our diverse culture is one of our greatest strengths and assets. And whereas the month of June was chosen for Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall Riots, which occurred in June 1969, and became a catalyst for the LGBTQIA movement. And whereas LGBTQIA people have made and continue to make great and lasting contributions to the city of Richfield and to the greater community. And whereas the LGBTQIA civil rights movement has achieved great progress, there remains a great deal of more progress to be had. And whereas the Richfield Human Rights Commission supports this proclamation in its May 3rd, 2020 meeting, and recommended that the Richfield City Council do the same. And now, therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, Mayor of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2020 as Pride Month in the city of Richfield and call on the people of Richfield to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, ceremonies, and continue to honor the contributions of LGBTQIA residents throughout the year, proclaimed on this 14th day of June 2022." I will sign this. Thank you. There you go. And Mara, would you like to share anything? You don't have to. I don't want to.
I'll wing it. Yeah. You know, I guess I'll just mention that it's been a very tough time for children who were born like that. And we need allies more than ever, people with good hearts and kindness and acceptance. Acceptance. I don't know. It's the most important thing to me personally is to transgender kids. So I guess I'll take this moment, put it forward for them, is I care for them so much. And thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you, Mara, for receiving the proclamation. Thank you for your contribution to Richfield. And I don't know if there's anybody on council who wants to comment before. I would... Councilmember Supple.
I would just like to echo what Commissioner Glubka said, that right now there sadly are people that are pushing back and causing discrimination and causing harm. And I think it's important for Richfield to take a stand and say, "We're not about that," and that we do have a positive stance that we're going to be working to protect the human rights of all of our residents and that we need to take a stand on this. So, thank you.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say, as a gay Richfielder, as a gay council member, this means a lot to me every year. I'm able to live in a way in openness that I was not open to myself as a child and hard to imagine being open in public life in the way that I am. And I found Richfield a really accepting community. But I also want to recognize that we kind of can't take any of that for granted, that there are forces that are trying to roll back things. And even as things stand today, I think as a cisgendered white gay man, I'm doing okay. That's not true for everybody in the LGBT community. So I know not everybody has it as easy. I've seen big changes in my 31 years. I know that there, I hope that that continues to be a forward progression for everybody in the queer community. We need to be cautious and we need to be dedicated, but I'm thankful for this month and I'm thankful for being in a really accepting community.
Councilmember Whalen.
I would echo the comments already made and just would say, I appreciated both in the proclamation, in the internal communications with staff about celebrating both Pride Month and Juneteenth, just the refusal to water down, that these were not coming out of happy moments when everyone was already fully getting along and welcoming each other, that Pride Month is coming out of riots, that Juneteenth is, I mean, years of extra slavery and decades of just horrendous things in our country and that it is not, it is not over. We have never had a fully welcoming democracy in which everyone matters in the way that our, the vision for it was there from the start, but it has never been yet a reality. And so, just want to acknowledge that these are, yes, celebratory moments, but are also a time to recognize that we are still on our way to that. And I hope that people, especially folks who do not identify in the LGBTQ community or folks with white skin, that we continue to take these as moments to keep working toward a more fully inclusive country.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Councilmember Trout.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Glubka. It's always good to see you and appreciate you and council. And I'm glad and grateful as a city that we can recognize Pride Month and also recognize, as other council members have mentioned, that civil liberties are not taken for granted. And as an attorney, I remember the first opportunity I had to represent a gay couple without the benefit of gay marriage and just the pain that it caused to not have those basic civil liberties and what it's meant to gain those. And now, as we reflect, and there are people and there are communities that want to take those civil rights away. And so, to the extent that we can say as a community, and I can say as a lawyer, that civil rights matter, that everybody in our community matters, and we're going to stand together as one community, that's what I see us doing here today. And I'm really grateful that we're able to do that unanimously as a community.
Thank you, Councilmember Trout. And then thank you for receiving the second proclamation.
Just got to make sure we do this.
Oh, no. That's... So, this one is focused on Juneteenth Freedom Day and declaring it here in Richfield. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas the United States of America is a nation founded on the principles of liberty and justice for all, but not all were offered the opportunity from the start. And whereas the institution of slavery in the United States, beginning in 1619 and continuing through 1865, transformed the newly established United States into an economic power through the oppressive and torturous system of millions of enslaved black peoples. And whereas on January 1st, 1863, during the Civil War, Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, giving freedom to enslaved people in rebelling states. And whereas freedom became a reality much later for enslaved black people in Texas on June 19th, 1865, over two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed. And whereas in the aftermath of slavery, African-Americans continue to face horrific discrimination through Jim Crow, forced segregation, mass atrocities in Tulsa and in Rosewood, lynching, and to this day, mass incarceration. And whereas the persistence of structural racism in America has led to vast inequities between black and white peoples in every area of life, from housing to education and employment, economic prosperity, health and wellness, life expectancy, and infant mortality. Whereas in Richfield, systemic discrimination was perpetrated through redlining and racial covenants. And whereas Juneteenth marks our country's second Independence Day, celebrating freedom and justice and emphasizing the education and achievements of African-Americans. And whereas we must do everything in our power to come together to deconstruct generations of systemic racism in our community, state, and country. And whereas African-Americans have made significant contributions to Richfield, to local communities, and our country as a whole. And lastly, whereas our communities must unite on this day to honor freedom and the commitment for everyone to work together to grant equal opportunity for all individuals. Now, therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, Mayor of the city of Richfield, do acknowledge the relevance of June 19th, 1865, and celebrate every June 19th as Juneteenth Freedom Day in the city of Richfield and call on people of Richfield to observe this day with appropriate programs, activities, ceremonies, and continue to honor the contributions of African-Americans throughout the year. Proclaim this 14th day of June 2022." And thank you for receiving this proclamation as well on behalf of the Richfield Human Rights Commission. And I just want to open it up, are there any additional comments? I think council kind of spoke to both items previously, but anything else? Councilmember Supple.
I wanted to thank the Human Rights Commission because I know that they are the ones that go about putting together these proclamations. And I know this is a very important proclamation as well. I didn't realize that it was only last year on June 17th, 2021, when this became a federal holiday and it's been a long time coming. So, thank you.
Other comments or questions or comments from folks? Councilmember Trout.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to recognize the, that events like Juneteenth are important to connect us to our history and because it's really easy to forget, before I was a council member, I wasn't aware that we had racial covenants that shaped how we built our city. Our city was built excluding black folks, Latino folks, Jewish folks, and Native folks. And someone who's grown up in Richfield, I wasn't aware of that. And so, when we take opportunities to stop and recognize our past, to stop and recognize victories and recognize work we need to do, it connects us and I think, it certainly clarifies my vision of the work that I need to do on the council, but it also is, I think, a good community reminder. So, thanks. I'm honored to be a liaison to the Human Rights Commission and appreciate their good work as well.
Thank you. Other comments from folks? I just want to say a thank you, because she's not here today, to Dr. Joyce Marie, Richfield's resident and commissioner and executive director of the Crossroads Nonprofit here in Richfield in the former Michael's Building in the hub. And she has been very committed to sharing the story of slavery and the history of slavery in our nation and in our communities and the generational impact that it's had in our communities today. She's focused on building the leadership of youth through performance and arts. And I know she was very interested in doing a Juneteenth celebration here in Richfield. And it sounds like, you know, this might be something that will be planned for the following year, but I'm very appreciative of the work that she does specifically in our community on this topic of connecting our history to where we are today as a community and what our responsibility is in all of these areas, but very much related to slavery and the oppression of African-American community members today and throughout our nation's history. So sometimes she is here for this proclamation on behalf of a commission, but since she's not here, I just want to call out a special thanks. And if you haven't connected with Crossroads, please do. Thank you so much, Mara, for receiving these.
I intend to deliver this.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Nice to see you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Someone moved?
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to move the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you, the agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar to be read by City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider approval of a contract with Timely Horn and Associates, Inc. to provide construction engineering services for the 65th Street Reconstruction Project for a fee not to exceed $851,153. Item B, consider the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on June 28th, 2022 to consider the issuance of a new on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday sale liquor license for MC Richfield, LLC, doing business as Millions Crab, located at 9663B. Item C, consider approval for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Academy of Holy Angels, located at 6600 Nicollet Avenue South, for their annual Rock the Lawn Event, scheduled to take place June 25th, 2022. Item D, consider approval of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Fourth of July event, scheduled to take place July 4th, 2022, at Fred Baap Pac DFW, number 5555, located at 6715 Liquor Drive. Item E, consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the city to affirm the monetary limits on statutory municipality court liability. And finally, item F, consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the purchase of a permanent lighting easement at 900 Ray Drive for the 65th Street Reconstruction Project. And I submit all of these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
I'll move consideration, or I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Any comments or questions on the consent calendar from council? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all disapproved, thank you. The consent calendar has been passed. The next item goes to councilmember Supple.
Thank you. This item is consideration of adoption of a resolution awarding the sale of $10 million General Obligation Bonds, Series 2022A. So as of May 10th, 2022, city council meeting, the city council approved a resolution providing for the sale of $10 million of General Obligation Bonds, Series 2022A. The Series 2022A bonds will accomplish the following. Provide funding for the 65th Street Reconstruction Project with a $5,410,000 par bond. Debt service for this portion of the bond issue will be provided by an estimated annual debt service tax levy of $398,000. The estimated increase in taxes for a residential property valued at $300,000 is $29.38. The series will also provide funding for the 65th Street Utility Improvements with a $4,590,000 par bond. Debt service for this portion of the bond issue is $312,000 and will be provided by water revenues. Bids on the... Bids on the 2022A General Obligation Bonds were due in the offices of Ellers and Associates, Incorporated, today, Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. A representative from Ellers and Associates Incorporated is here at the council meeting to recommend the successful bidder, review documents, and provide information that is absent from the resolution and available only after the bidding on the bonds is closed. Following that recommendation, it will be appropriate for the City Council to award the bond sale to the qualified buyer and undertake other related actions as delineated in the approving resolution. The anticipated closing on the 2022A bonds is scheduled for July 7th, 2022. And I'd like to turn it over to City Manager Rodriguez at this point to tell us those details of what happened today.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. And actually, we have Rebecca Kurtz here from Ellers, our financial advisor, and she'll make the presentation tonight. But I just want to take the opportunity to introduce our new finance manager, Kumud Verma. Manager Verma has been with us for about three or four weeks now, and we are just so grateful that she's here and leading our finance department. And so with that, I'll have Ms. Kurtz come up and make the presentation and also have maybe Ms. Verma may just introduce herself briefly.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kumud Verma, and I'm the new city treasurer and finance manager. Prior to joining City of Richfield, I served Minnesota Public Radio in multiple finance and accounting roles for 18 years. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting and master's degree in finance. My career has been focused on serving to the community and promoting the common good. I'm looking forward to working at the city with the same focus. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you and welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers. And as presented in the opening staff report, as you know, I was here about a month ago calling for the sale of bonds for $10 million for the city's 22 and 23 Street Reconstruction and Utility Projects. We did accept bids in our office this morning. I'm going to take a step back, though, and as we have done with previous issues for the city, we did go through the rating process with Standard &amp; Coors. And so as you've heard me say so many times before, Standard &amp; Coors did assign its AA+ rating, long-term rating, to the City of Richfield for these bonds, the $10 million Series 2022A. And along with that, they affirmed the AA+ rating for all of your outstanding general obligation debt. So again, it's that continued recognition of the work that staff, council, and everybody is doing to really continue to maintain the financial responsibility of the community and have good management, good policies, and everything that takes to run a city and be financially stable. The complete rating report is included in the sale day packet that was handed out just before the meeting. So I would encourage you to read that when you have some time, but I do want to just take a couple minutes and highlight a couple of the statements that were shared by Standard &amp; Coors in the report. Standard &amp; Coors Global Ratings assigns its AA+ long-term rating to the City of Richfield, Minnesota's $10 million Series 2022A General Obligation Bonds, and at the same time affirms the AA+ rating on the city's existing debt. The outlook is stable. The rating reflects Standard &amp; Coors' assessment of the following factors for the City of Richfield. Ongoing property redevelopment, steady revenue growth and forward-looking budgeting leading to routine operating surpluses and very strong budgetary flexibility and liquidity, very strong management with the robust financial policies and practices. And then they talk about the adequate debt and contingency liability and recognize the rapid amortization of the debt that the city has. Again, recognizing that there is a fair amount of debt that is needed any time with communities continue to redevelop, but recognizing the city's responsibility to try and have that as short as possible and continue to be rapidly paying off the debt once it is incurred. With that, again, the complete report is in there, and there is a lot of positive and good things to share about the community, so I do encourage you to take a few moments to review that. So the reason we are here today is to review the bids that we received. We did receive six bids. And again, in the packet that I handed out, there is a detail of the six bidders and the bids that they submitted. The low bid was Piper Sandler, which is based out of here in Minneapolis, and with the true interest cost of 3.774%. I will recognize that with that, we did see an increase from when I was here about a month ago. About a month ago, we had estimated a rate of 3.54%. We, in the last, actually, I was sharing with Katie that in the last 24 hours, we had some stress in our office because we saw yesterday be one of the most volatile and worst bond days in municipal markets that we've seen in two years, so we were a little concerned today. So while it is slightly higher than where we anticipated a month ago, we do believe it is a very strong bid and are going to recommend that you do award to the bid from Piper Sandler at 7 point, or 3.74%. I do want to note in the information that you received with the detail from the six bids that we received today, five of them were in that 3.7% range, which is a good indication of where the market really was today. They all were pretty tight. With this bond, as with past bonds, there is a call date. So in the event that in February of 2032, you would choose to refinance it for interest savings or prepay any or all of it, you do have that option again in February of 2032. I also want to note that we did receive a premium bid, so we received a little more money than what we had needed or what we were hoping to receive from these preliminary offerings again a month ago. So we were able to adjust the cash flow, again, keeping the par amount of the bond at that $10 million, so it is bank-qualified. We were able, though, to reduce the contribution of, from 1.7 from ARPA funds to 775,640. So there was some savings, at least, from the cash there. Annual debt service payments are slightly higher, due in large part because of the slightly higher interest rate than what we anticipated a month ago. With that, as mentioned, we are looking to close the bonds on July 7th, so funds would be wired to the city that morning. And with that, I would recommend awarding to Piper Sandler with the true interest cost of 3.74, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions from council? Councilmember Wayland.
I always appreciate, as it was, I know it was the estimate when the staff report was written, but the estimated annual debt service tax levy was expected to be at $398,000. Do we know yet, or does that take more math to figure out how much higher?
Nope. I have it right here. So the levy that we are estimating is about $428,000 to $432,000 over, in that range over the 20 years. So about, on average, $430,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? City Manager Rodriguez.
Yes, Mayor. Also, it's 1.1 million that the council authorized to be, a month ago, planned to bring the bond size down to 10 million. So it's about $325,000 savings. The 1.76 is actually the MSA funds that we added to the.
Thank you. My apologies. You did send me that email before.
I didn't catch it till late. I sent you an email late.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Troutman.
I just wanted to thank you and thank Ellers for doing this, this good work, and just explain both to the residents here and folks that are watching that it's incumbent on city leaders, you know, twice a century to repair and invest in our infrastructure, and it's one of the largest financial responsibilities that we have. And I really want to thank our staff. I want to thank Kristin Asher, our Public Works Director, for really having visions to maintain and invest in our infrastructure throughout the generations, even it wouldn't be easy politically and fiscally to kick the can down the road. We have not been doing that in this city, and as costs increase, we're feeling those pains now, but we're not in crisis because of great leadership before us and staff that had a vision to continue to do this work. And for folks that are wondering, well, why don't, why don't we just save up for this money? Why are we bonding for this money when, when times are tough and cash, you know, it's not, it's not fiscally responsible to put that money aside? And because leadership changes, and the council is another reason why, you know, putting that money aside as opposed to bonding is not necessarily the right way to pay for this infrastructure. So for folks that are watching, I just want to share that, and I just want to thank again our staff and Ellers for doing this project, but also leading us on a path that I think tends towards sustainability as opposed to crisis. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. And I'll just add to some of the comments you shared for additional context. It definitely has not meant for us on council and on staff that we've, we've had to make pretty hard decisions, and this was one of the projects that we've deferred. We wanted to get done sooner than, than we are getting done, but looking at the timing and, and looking at all of the city infrastructure priorities and, and just balancing our bonding, these are all different things that we had to take into account. And when, in the past few years, when we were looking at, you know, multiple crisis situations, specifically around COVID and the impact that that had on our city, this project specifically was one that we, we had to delay. And the time is right for so many reasons. It's sorely needed, but additionally, as we're preparing for the redevelopment of the hub, and it is already a project that we did have to make a decision to delay, the time is, is now for this project as well. So this one in particular, I, I think it's, it's time to do this. So just wanted to add that context. And, and just thank our, our staff for making those really hard decisions and, and for Ellers for supporting us along the way. And I am very thankful, like, other cities are not in the financial condition that we are in here in Richfield, and, and I'm very thankful because that's been generations of leadership on the councils, but also on, from city staff making these types of decisions. And, and you can see the impact that that has in our community today. We are growing and thriving, and that is thanks to, to fiscal responsibility for generations. So. Other comments from folks? All right. So we had a motion? In a second?
We have.
Oh, we have not. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation.
So I would move to adopt a resolution awarding the sale of General Obligation Bonds Series 2022A in the original aggregate principal amount of $10 million, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment.
Councilmember Troutman, second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any additional comments or questions from council? Councilmember Supple.
I know at the last meeting, we had a, was it the last one or the one before, we had a long discussion about whether we should do this over two years or do it in one year. And it was decided because it was going to save around $900,000 that we would do it in one year and use some of the ARPA funds. So it was really good news to hear today that we got some of that premium so that there, it's going to free up over $300,000 of the ARPA funds. So it's like we want in two ways. So we saved the $900,000 before, but we get $300,000 of that back again to continue to use for other services. And it should help, this project will alleviate a lot of the flooding that goes on around Richfield Lake and 65th Street, so I think it's something that's important to do.
Thank you, Councilmember. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Just to clarify, did we need to name the bidder, or is it just implied that the lowest bidder is the one receiving the bonds? As written, it doesn't specify.
Do we need to make any changes to that?
Mayor and Council, and Ms. Kurtz can correct me if I'm wrong, but the resolution will be updated, so I think the motion is fine as it stands.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mayor, I believe the motion or the updated resolution is already posted at that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just wanted to comment briefly specifically on this, this project of 66th Street, or 65th Street, and how important it is to our community. 65th Street is, is close and right in between the largest concentration of our senior citizens and folks that have the least mobility and some of the worst roads with the least accessibility. And, and so making that road safer and more walkable so we don't have folks that have walkers and are otherwise less mobile, walking through parking lots that are icy on a deep decline, that we're going to have proper walkways for them. And also for everybody who talks about the hub and the redevelopment that we'd like to see there, and for everybody who's wondered why close to a third of the hub is a parking lot that nobody uses, it's because all the infrastructure that's underneath that parking lot prevents us from building anything on that. So this is timely as we look to redevelop the hub or the opportunities that the hub may have to be redeveloped. This is a really critical piece in making sure that happens. And so that's another reason why we're doing this now, and it's an important investment to make right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Other comments or questions? Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The motion has been adopted. The next item is the City Manager's Report with City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. As we enter this more stable phase with COVID, Bloomington Public Health is no longer issuing a weekly report. And so unless there's something to report, and I won't be making a report at every council meeting, we continue to see that the cases, both with the wastewater data and the cases that are being reported, just, you know, slowly tick down. And I don't have any other reports tonight.
Thank you. Any questions on the City Manager Report? All right. Next item is claims and payroll.
Mayor, I would move claims and payroll.
I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Claims and payroll has been moved. And the next item is hats off, and the final item, hats off to hometown hits, and I'll start with Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to lift up that today was the start of the summer music at the Richfield Band Shell. If you want to see the schedule of who is performing, that is, you can find that on the city website or just Google Richfield Band Shell schedule. But that will be Tuesdays through the summer. In the morning, there are kid-friendly, family-friendly performances, and then in the evening will be some concert bands, some swing bands, variety of things. So check that out over the summer. And then the other thing I wanted to lift up is just wanted to thank, I know Director Asher was part of it, but several other Public Works staff as well. The comment period just closed for the environmental assessment for 494, and just really appreciated the, I mean, not that it just started with this phase of things, but their ongoing work negotiating with MinDOT, clearly stating our, our values, our goals as a city. I felt particularly that their, their comments on that were very needed, very appropriate, and very thoughtful. So I know that has been several years in the making with lots of moments like that, but just wanted to lift that up.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. I wanted to express my appreciation for our farmer's market. I was able to go there this weekend, and it was just a thriving hub of people, and everybody seemed to really be enjoying themselves. And the Arts Commission next week at the farmer's market on June 18th is going to have activities for families to do art together, and they're going to have a jazz guitarist playing during that time. So they're calling it Jazzy Art in the Park. So if you're heading over to the farmer's market, please check out. So if you're heading over to the, um, farmer's market, please check out that as well. Um, another thing that Richfield is part of is we belong to the 494 Corridor Commission, and they have a commuter services division. And this month is going to be Bike to Work Month that's being celebrated. So you can go to 494corridor.org to get more information about it, but Richfield is part of this. And you can register if you sign the pledge that you're going to bike to work at least one day in the month of June. You can enter to win an electric bicycle, a Garmin Rearview Raider device, or a $100 Bike Shop gift card. And there's going to be a big celebration at the REI in Bloomington on 494 and Lyndale on Thursday, June 23rd, from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. So I wanted to do a shout out to commuter services that has been working a lot with us here in Richfield and of this surrounding communities and to celebrate Bike to Work Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I just want to thank our Public Works Department. I've had a couple of different, um, concerns from residents about two projects, 65th Street and some congestion from a detour at 66 in Portland. And just on top of everything else they're handling, um, doing a lot to be really responsive to those residents and the concerns. And just to pass on that there is congestion at 66 in Portland due to the Cedar Avenue detour. So thank you for everyone's patience and the residents who have, who've reached out about that.
Thank you. And Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to lift up, uh, Woodlake Nature Center, uh, this week, uh, two, two items. Um, one, uh, I saw the largest turtle I think I've ever seen in Richfield. It's not quite two feet, and, and, um, they had just crawled onto the, onto the, the sand and gravel area where they had planted, uh, their, uh, their, their babies, and they just hatched. And there were dozens of eggs, uh, all over the next morning. I saw the turtle, wasn't moving, and it's, I'd never seen anything like that. Uh, and then, then later in the week, we saw the, the dozens of hatched eggs. Um, and so with that, I just want to say that, uh, I'm so grateful to both our senators and our congress member, um, for advocating so zealously to, to get the upgrades to the Woodlake Nature Center, uh, center that we, we earnestly need. The building's in need of repair, and it's a community lift. Um, and so to have, uh, uh, all of our, uh, uh, national elected leaders, um, Senators Tina Smith and AB Klobuchar, and our congress member Ilhan Omar, all advocating and advocating at the levels we need to get that project done. We're really grateful, uh, for our city who has been, uh, squirreling, um, money, uh, away judiciously, knowing that this day would come. I'm really grateful. And, uh, for our legislators who've been advocating for that, and all the senators who came out to, uh, look at and experience, um, uh, Woodlake Nature Center, which really is, for folks that don't know, an incredible resource, not just for our city, but is a regional resource for thousands of kids. Um, and, um, and it, it's, it's incredible asset for our region. And so I just want to take my hats off to all the folks in the region and in the state that are joining us in advocating for preserving and expanding and making that more accessible to more people.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Absolutely. That is a huge win. Um, and very thankful for that support from our representatives. Um, I have two items. I have been able to be a part of some of our graduations. I just want to congratulate all of our Richfield grads, um, from fifth grade graduation into the middle school, from the middle school to the high school, and, and from our high schools as well. Just thinking about the times that our students have been leading in the past two years and to know that they've been so resilient through it all, um, learning from home and all the changes they've experienced, being away from their friends, um, just the impact that it's had on our kids and, and how strong they've been and how inventive and creative they've been and resilient. It has been really fun to be a part of their graduations and to just thank them for their awesome leadership and resilience and, and wish them well on their next journey. So I just want to, um, congratulate all of our grads. I've been seeing a lot of awesome, um, graduation parties all over the community and the neighborhoods. So congrats to all of our Richfield grads. And then lastly, um, Councilmember Supple shared this with me, and I'm so glad you did. Um, this is something we've been working on for a couple of years now, since maybe before the census. Um, and we were trying to get this done back then, a few, a few years ago, and it's taken two years to make happen, but the Galaxy, um, grocery store on the corner of 71st and Chicago Avenue, right down the street from my house, is having a big block party, and the focus of that block party is to build community, um, in the neighborhood where that grocery store is located. There's a couple different, um, other retailers there as well and restaurants, but there's, um, apartment communities there, there's single-family homes. Um, and we're celebrating community there at Galaxy Foods. There's going to be a DJ, um, food, zumba, ice cream, all these different things. And I'm just going to read the invite because it just shares about, uh, what the focus is. So we're really excited to have a new community mural that is coming up on Galaxy Foods off of 71st and Chicago. And with your input, we would like to help, um, we would like to help determine what it looks like. The Mixto Art Collective will be hosting an imagination station where you can share your thoughts with artists. So we have raised the funds. Finally, it took us two years to do so, to get a beautiful community mural on the side of Galaxy Foods. And then Mixto Art is led by a Richfield resident and artist. And then this initiative is led, um, co-led by the Richfield Arts Commission, the Richfield Leadership Network, Galaxy Foods. So just an amazing example. It's going to be on 10, um, at 10:00 AM it starts, and then it ends at 2:00 PM on Saturday, June 25th. So please bring your friends and family. And I just want to thank all the community-led grassroots, um, organizations and a small local business in our community for putting this together and not giving up. And we have said, we are going to make this mural happen. We don't know how, but we're making it happen, and I'm very excited for that. So, um, please join the Galaxy Block Party on June 25th. And thank you to the Arts Commission, to Galaxy Foods, Mixto Art Collective, and the Richfield Leadership Network. So that is it for our agenda. I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming.